We are going to call the meeting. I'm going to hit the gavel over here. I am the vice chair. Chair is not here. My name is Terry. The meeting is called order. All right. This is the October 14, 2025, meeting of Kusbay Planning Commission. There's a couple of public hearing, a couple of items on the agenda today. If anybody wants to speak, make sure you fill out the speaker form and get that squared away. And if you do come to speak, we ask that you step up to the podium, keep it on topic, and keep it three minutes or less. I'm going to be monitoring that with a stopwatch. Not really, but if it gets long, it gets digressing. Bang on that gavel there, which I've never got to do before, so I'm really eager to do that. Okay, so what do we do first?
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Agiri. Commissioner Berg.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
And vice chair Terry.
Here. Okay, so four out of seven, I believe that's a quorum. There we go. So, first thing, public comment not related to the agenda items. Anybody? Once, twice, thrice? Okay. So, the first agenda item, make sure I get the right one first. 115, 114 probably comes before 115. Sorry, I'm the vice chair. I didn't prepare much for this, so bear with me. Okay, this is the call and procedure for the hearing. I now open a public hearing on land use application number 187-25-000114. P as in Papa, L as in Limo, N as in November, G as in Golf. Proposal to approve and adopt by ordinance text amendments to the City of Kusbay Comprehensive Plan. Today is October 14, 2025. It's approximately, I don't know, 6:06 PM. My name is Pat Terry. I'm the vice chairman of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council on this application based on the complete record, including the testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings will be recorded. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with the Kusbay Development Code and state law. Specifically, city staff will first present the staff report and recommendation. For public testimony, I will first ask to hear from people who would like to speak in favor of the proposal, and then I want to hear from the opposition to the proposal. And again, make sure you stand there. Make sure you speak into the microphone. I often get in trouble for not doing that. Ms. Chelsea will correct me if I'm wrong. Finally, people who have neutral comments or questions about the proposal, neither for or against, will have the opportunity to speak. City staff may then present additional material and recommendations based on the testimony. And after each presentation, I may ask for questions from the commission. For anyone wishing to speak, we are asking you to use the signup sheet there in the back that's been provided. And when you speak, you must state your name and address for the public record. We ask that each speaker limped himself to no more than three minutes. Please remember that all presentations will be timed. You will be informed when your allotted time is expired. All speakers exceeding the time limit will be asked to immediately conclude his or her remarks. To minimize repetitive testimony, organizations are encouraged to only have one person speak for the group, with other members showing their support. Each person may testify only once unless called back to the podium at the request of a planning commission member. Thank you for your cooperation. Okay, now, this is for our part for the conflicts of interest, ex parte contact, or bias. And again, this is the one for the economic opportunity analysis. The Planning Commission is required to disclose any conflicts of interest and ex parte contacts we may have had with the proposal or applicant. That is, whether we have any financial or other personal interest in the proposal, whether we have spoken with anybody about the proposal outside this hearing. Anybody have any disclosures? I'm seeing a bunch of head shaking no. Okay, so, I'm not supposed to read this part. If none, move on to the next part. So, are there, now this is to you guys, are there any challenges from the audience tonight as the conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts related to the members of the Planning Commission? No, no hands, okay. Challenges made, da-da-da-da-da. Okay, now, required statements. State law requires me to tell you a number of things at the beginning of the hearing. First, the applicable substantive criteria that apply to this application are contained in the notice of public hearing, the written staff report, and will be identified and discussed in the oral staff report. Second, your testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to this application. Third, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker or other people an opportunity to respond may preclude an appeal of a decision if this application based on, appeal of a decision on this application based on that issue. Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council for a final decision. A decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, otherwise known as LUBA. All right, so now we get down to the meat of it. Everybody wrapped an attention here. So, we will now hear from the staff applicant who will go over the staff report. Ms. Nabel.
Yes, thank you, vice chair Terry. Welcome, everyone, tonight. The, as mentioned, we, our first item on the agenda is what we call legislative text amendment proposal. In this case, it's related to amending our comprehensive plan to do two things. One, adopt the updated 2025 Economic Opportunities Analysis. And two, to amend chapter 7.5, the economic element of the comprehensive plan to align with that updated, what we call an EOA. So, as mentioned, Planning Commission won't make any decisions tonight. They hold a public hearing to make a recommendation to city council. City council is tentatively scheduled to conduct their public hearing in November. In summary, real briefly, the proposal will repeal and replace the EOA that was completed in 2009. So, this is almost 20 years later. We're required to update that. And that document starts at page 22 of the PDF or the packet for the agenda tonight. It also amends the comprehensive plan. That starts at page four of the PDF packet. Again, those amendments are purely related to aligning with the updated EOA. So, a little bit of background, the city is required under Oregon statewide planning goals to maintain a 20-year supply of industrial commercial lands. And we do this by regularly, at least once every 20 years, looking at the economic landscape, completing an economic opportunities analysis, and then amending our comprehensive plan accordingly. So, the goal is to boost economic development potential of and better transportation connections throughout the project area. We actually have been working on this project for over the past year. There's been lots of public hearings. Planning Commission, city council hold joint work sessions. There was a public advisory committee who met on multiple occasions. It consisted of residents, property owners, business owners, affected agencies. They provided input. Additional stakeholder feedback was obtained through one-on-one interviews and focus groups. There was an online community survey that gathered additional feedback. The draft proposal that's in the, before Planning Commission tonight incorporates all feedback to date. And the proposed amendments are in line with the statewide planning goal and ensure our economic element of our comprehensive plan is in line with the updated EOA. So, as of today, commissioners, I received one written comment. That's before you. I believe we may have additional comments that you'll hear tonight. The one written comment received, I did not have a lot of time to look into, review it. Our public notice does say written testimony is to be submitted the Friday before public hearing. Of course, I wouldn't say that we disclude it, but submitting it in the nth hour gives us little time to review. What I did notice was the comments were directed at references to the port's shipping container project. I'll just call out that we, this, the EOA is not intended to do anything like to support that project other than to acknowledge that it is in, it is a potential project out in the landscape that could affect the city's economic opportunities. And so, it is considered in there. And I think the city, through that public engagement, determined, yes, we acknowledge that could be coming. We acknowledge that there's potential impacts. But we don't want to base our EOA solely on that. So, it doesn't. It acknowledges it, but it also accounts for a Kusbay that we want to be resilient economically one way or the other. So, you have the full, full staff report in front of you. Our Planning Commission can certainly make a recommendation.
Somebody to the label?
Here, it's.
All right.
To council to approve the land use application and to adopt the proposed amendments. Before doing any of that, you'll want to take a public comment and ask questions as needed.
Okay, so we're opening up? So, we're opening up for public comment at this point in time? Is that correct, Ms. Nabel?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, does anybody wish to come to the podium and speak?
There are, there's two.
Two? One, I believe it was 114. So, I have an Ashley Adiki. Did I spell that? Did I say that right? I'm sorry, I did not.
You actually really did say that, right?
Awesome.
I say that because a lot of people butchered that one. Come up down, maybe you can test another.
Well, good evening. My name is Ashley Adiki, and I work with the climate justice organization, Row Climate, that has an office here in downtown Kusbay. Thank you for the opportunity to make comment this evening on the land use application that seeks to replace the 2009 economic opportunity analysis with the recently conducted 2025 version. We applaud the City of Kusbay for taking the time to host a committee, conduct surveys, and more, to develop an economic analysis that meant to reflect the future growth for the region. While agree, while we agree with general goals that include to strengthen and diversify the local economy, we must ask for a continuance due to the goal 3.9 that lists to support the Kus, Port of Kusbay and its development of dot-dot-dot, to develop a deep draft channel. Listing this within the comprehensive plan goal and associated policies may have implications for how to effectively evaluate future permit applications. This expresses bias for projects that are listed in the EOA, such as the Pacific Coast Intermodal Project. We request the City of Kusbay to exclude this specific language from the policies in the document as developing a deep draft channel may have impact, may impact goals. The EOA lists language that, to suggest that there could be upwards of 9,400 regional jobs from the PSET project that appears to be speculative without any citations to support this number. As statewide planning goal nine suggests, EOA's are meant to focus on concise needs and trends for economic development. As the PCIP currently stands, the project is not fully designed nor started the permit process. PSET is expected to apply for goal exceptions and future permit processes regarding statewide planning goal 16, because the PSET is at odds with the Kusbay Estuary Management Plan. It would be irresponsible for the City of Kusbay to approve goal 3.9 as currently stands. Existing industries such as commercial and recreational fishing, tourism, conservation, and more depend on a healthy estuary. The Kus Estuary is considered to be the nursery bed for the fish and shelfs industries and acts as a carbon sink. A healthy estuary protects our coastline and nearby communities from the impacts of flooding and extreme storms, making this region a climate refuge for people seeking relief from wildfire and smoke that were highlighted in the analysis. Developing a deep draft channel would have irreversible impacts on essential habitats, cultural resources, and nearby communities. Robust tribal consultation and further study is needed to understand the full scope of these impacts to the local estuary. This draft EOA fails to address the economic harm that this development could bring on generations of coastal industries like fishing and tourism. And just wanted to wrap this up with the, that we encourage the City of Kusbay to refine goal 3.9 language to not list the develop a deep draft channel in order to adopt the 2025 EOA. And I know I left out a couple parts from my full comment, but I have a written copy to submit here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that was specific to goal number 3.9. Is that my understanding? Okay. And Ms. Nabel, just so I'm understanding this correctly, as I'm looking at the redline version of the draft that goes comprehensive text amendments. And specifically, I guess I'm looking at page, what is that, 122?
I'm looking at page 116 of the PDF.
Okay. Let me see if I can. Maybe my reader doesn't. But it's the one that has goal and has little boxes there?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. And so, that's all new language that's in this new EOA, correct?
Correct. The existing goals and policies are being updated where there's strike through, that's removed.
Right.
Underlined, added, yep.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners have any comments on that particular comment or questions, I guess, from Ms. Adiki? Anybody? No? All right. So, thank you, Ms. Adiki. We appreciate your input there. So, I have a Craig Cooley who has a question mark next to his name.
I was, I just didn't know what we were talking about. I thought it had something to do with my neighborhood.
Oh, okay. Well, all right. If you want to speak, now's your time.
I pass. Thank you, though.
Okay. Next, looks like we have Christine Moffett.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment today. I've given a, I have written text that I will read. There's other issues that certainly could be addressed. The first things, I want to talk about the draft report and point out that there are many elements that are well presented and, but there are points of omission and points with incorrect details. Some of the incorrect details are important to the outcome of the focus areas and revised plan. The PCIP project is mentioned at various places in the document, as if this document of development is fully fleshed out and on its way to creation. It is not. There have been no economic assessment of the proposal, and various job numbers are placed into the report. There are numbers provided in this document that are different from those that are provided in documents that are available as part of submissions to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Page two of the attachment A quotes, "The Port of Kusbay has plans to develop a 2.3 billion shipping container facility project supported by the governor's office with a recently approved $100 million grant from the Oregon Legislature." That is not correct. HB 5006 included authorization to issue $100 million of general obligation bonds for this Kusbay modification project, but the accompanying SB 5505 outlines specific requirements to be met before the bonds could be issued. They were listed with completion of the environmental impact statement for the project issuance of final report of decision through the NEPA process, additionally requiring that the Oregon International Port of Kusbay or private entity engaged in public partnership with the, public-private partnership with the port has closed on a railroad rehabilitation and improvement financing loan through Build America Bureau in the amount of at least $1 billion or has secured equivalent. Page III of the attachment A, the potential expansion of the PCIP addresses that the city should plan to leverage the expansion and potential employment as a key opportunity. This is an endorsement of the concept before the entire plan is provided. There was a recent strategic planning exercise conducted, and there are a lot of pushback on this project. The community of Empire, and I've spoken to you before about Empire, has been concerned. Anyway, I think there needs to be a careful assessment of every part of this proposed document before that, that any approvals are made. I include elements that have already been addressed in terms of the numbers of jobs. When we go, the final thing, and it's on the last page, is that goals five and six from your 2009 plan have two important things. Goal five was to recruit sustainable industries and industries that provide green collar jobs. Goal six was also maximum use of Kusbay unique geographic and recreational assets and cultural heritage. I think both of these are completely diluted in the proposed amendments as they've been included. And you, again, have heard me talking about the importance of the Hollering Place and all these other cultural things. So, I know my time is up. The written comments are there, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Hold on a second, there is some questions, commissioners?
I urge a careful reading of this document.
Okay, so, specifically, I, obviously, I haven't read in detail your written comments, but what I'm looking at, you have page three, page level three, the lies, and then page 24. I guess what I'm trying to figure out here is laser focus directed at this document. Are there, what parts are you specifically concerned with?
That, those are some quotes. There are other points that, I was hoping to get through this in three minutes, but I can, I can highlight the other elements where there's a discussion about PCIP with incorrect information.
Okay, all right, hold on a minute. Is there? Is that a writing utensil somewhere? Thank you.
And that, and that's the statement that I made, and in my document to you, the italicized information after I say that is not correct. This is, this is completely from the public record.
I know, I got that.
Okay.
So, but the PCIP, and basically, I'm just trying to understand your argument. The PCIP issues, you have an issue with the, with the support in this document for the PCIP project.
Correct. Inaccurate information. They don't have $100 million in their hands. And then, a careful assessment, as, as was already pointed out, in terms of the job numbers, I mean, when you, when you look at jobs that are quoted, where's the assessment? Where's the analysis of that? Where's the reference to those jobs?
Can you point out to me where these job numbers are?
Page 24.
Page 24. Okay, very good. Hold on, give me a moment.
It says, "Port officials estimate the expansion will generate approximately 9,400 jobs, including 2,500 terminal workers, 6,900 indirect jobs, and 2,600 construction jobs." Those, those numbers have not been shown in any detail whatsoever. And then, I point out that the 2.3 billion that's quoted throughout the document.
Give me one second. It takes me a while to scroll through this thing.
Oh, yeah, I know. It's a long read.
Yeah, no, the PDF numbering and the Bates numbering doesn't match.
Exactly, yeah. So, I was giving you the page numbers.
So, that's page 45, Bates.
Well, it's the document number, page 24, yeah. And also on that page, and throughout the document, a 2.3 billion is mentioned, but there's a 4.3 billion estimate provided in documents provided to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And I could give you those numbers, but it's not in this document.
When it was provided to the Army Corps of Engineers, in what, what context was it provided to the Army Corps of Engineers?
The, there's a complete, incomplete, because they're close to putting in environmental assessment now, but those, those documents are all available on the web pipe of the Port of Kusbay under the estuary alterations. And I could give you, I could give you that. We've, there's various points in that that give different numbers for, but the, the numbers given to the Army Corps of Engineers are almost twice that what's in this document.
Okay. And when you say numbers given to the Army Corps of Engineers, numbers given by who to the Army Corps of Engineers?
The port.
All right, and then?
And then, I mention again that on that page 25, which is another number in the PDF, but the $100 million comes in again as if it was a done deed, and it's not correct. It's incorrect.
Okay. One other thing that I wanted to ask you about in your, the italicized portion on the first page of your written document here, where it states, additionally requires the Oregon International Port of Kusbay or private entity engaged in public-private partnership with the port has closed on a railroad rehabilitation and improvement financing loan through the Build America Bureau, blah, 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 blah. What?
That's in the statute that was signed by the governor.
Which one?
That's 5505, I think. I could, I could follow up on that, but.
No, I haven't, sorry. Okay.
But again, to me, it's just misinformation that it's not correct.
All right. All right. Thank you, ma'am. I have no further questions for you.
Thank you.
So, apparently, there is Dr. Hannah Epstein online who'd like to make a public comment if possible. I do not have the technological know-how to do that, but hopefully the people to my right, not my immediate right, but to my right.
All you need to do is let you speak if you allow.
Ms., or Dr. Epstein, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. So, you're now on the record.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak out of Kusbay. I'm Dr. Hannah Epstein, speaking on behalf of Oregon Shores, who's based out of Kusbay. Oregon Shores is a statewide nonprofit of constituents in Kusbay, and our mission is to increase the resilience of coastal and estuary, coastal and communities. They're really active in phase one of the Kusbay Estuary Management Plan and continuing patient barriers regarding Kusbay coastal environments. So, our comments today actually do follow on from previous comments regarding the added language on port modifications. The economic opportunities analysis focuses on the economic channel modifications and container terminal considered prior to Port of Kusbay, and we feel this is really misplaced. There is currently no evidence or support for the claims made about the project or its to be benefits. For example, the analysis claims that port expansion provides 9,000, 9,100 regional jobs, citing conversations with staff at the port for that number. There's no evidence or concrete analysis to support the number on the record, which is in violation of the city qualification that bases land use decisions on substantial evidence. Under statewide land use goal nine and associated regulations, economic opportunity analyses are supposed to be based on concrete track and needs for industrial development. Focusing so much of the analysis and associated, associated comments and amendments on a set of projects such as this that would require lawful amendments to the city's comprehensive plan to be allowable and not consistent with those requirements. There's no dispute that the channel modification mentioned by the analysis and the comments and amendments are not consistent with the Kusbay comprehensive plan and the Kusbay Estuary Management Plan, and for that reason, the channel modification will require at least an exception to the statewide land use goal 16 before it can be enforced. at least an exception to the statewide land use law sixteen before it can move forward. And as we saw, if it's successful, it'll have similar channel modifications for the Georgia code LNG project, there's a good chance that such an exception cannot be granted. So what the proposed comprehensive plan amendments that reference the channel modification are attempting to do is to provide support in the comprehensive plan for a project that is inherently at odds with the plan before moving forward with specific of the whole process. This again is in clear violation of the duties of the statewide land use system. The city cannot engineer policies favorable to specific development projects, of course, considered whether the development project is consistent with the plan. And so we do request that the planning commission remove the references to the speculative channel modification and container terminal project in the economic opportunity analysis and the associated comprehensive plan amendments. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today.
Okeydoke. Any questions for Dr. Epstein? Dr. Epstein, what are you a doctor of?
Uh, that's a great question. I'm a marine biologist.
Excellent. Where you, where are you sitting right now when you're speaking to us?
I'm just speaking in Newport.
Okay.
Yes.
And what was the name of your organization again, please?
Um, Oregon Shores.
You say it's a nonprofit of some sort, I'm assuming?
Yes, very conservation nonprofit, based out of Spain.
All right. And again, your, I think like all the comments so far, your main objections to the language of this economic opportunity analysis have to do with the, the PCIP?
Yes, the language and support for PCIP.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. Epstein, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's see, I gotta look at my agenda here, make sure I don't...
You did.
Yeah. Well, we didn't really, we kind of messed that up, that's okay, it's all written down there. I guess we don't have any neutral people, oppositions, support. Anybody else want to talk about the economic opportunity analysis? All right. Anything from the staff?
Yeah, um, so we're hearing comments that suggest this economic opportunities analysis is heavily weighted dependent on the PCIP, while that is not an accurate reflection of the updated EOA and/or the process that led here. It was actually very thoughtfully considered to be, we know it's a potential out there and we do have every right to consider it as a potential out there. We would be not doing the city any justice to, to ignore it. These are twenty-year plans. And so, for example, the jobs, there's references to 9,000 jobs. This plan on Page Thirty-Nine of the PD-8 DF Packet calls out that only 600 to 1,200 of those total jobs are actually being attributed to Coos County, so even fewer to the city of Coos Bay. The way that these numbers are developed, there's nothing that you can put a pinpoint on how many jobs in the city of Coos Bay well we receive. But there was lots of conversation with the port, lots of conversation with the economic agencies of the state regarding this, this whole thing. And so I would just caution while I understand that there are many who err on one side or the other in support or not support of a potential PCIP project. This economic opportunities analysis stands alone and separate from that. It is not a document in and of itself that would allow that project to move forward. As you heard, there are many other permits and processes, land use actions that would need to take place in order for that to happen. So this document is, you know, a year's plus worth of engagement with planning commission, council, stakeholders, public, to say what is the realistic potential for our needs over the twenty-year planning period. And to do that, we considered the PCIP project because it is out there as a potential in the horizon. So I will say that, there was comment about removing references to the Empire District, but those were really replaced with broader, just general support of our businesses. So it doesn't deflect from supporting the Empire District. To the contrary, the city is very much supportive of both the Empire District, the downtown, and our other core areas. Um, is there any other questions, commission, would like to ask, want more information on specifically? Be happy to try to answer those.
Specifically, we have to make, our, our job is to make recommendations to the city council.
Correct.
What, what, what are, what is it though, that, that we are supposed to be recommending?
Uh, whether or not you would recommend approval, denial, whatever your recommendation is for the, for adoption of the updated economic opportunities analysis, so that's the planning document that you've heard lots of talk about, and also recommendation as to what we should do with the text amendments that come with that, the comprehensive plan policies that the city would have set up, established.
I, I can't, but just, I'm going to be, that when we talk about employment, we talk about opportunities, and we talk about glowingly the lumbering logging industry that we had. I spent ten years, about forty years ago, hiring people for, for warehouses and for international paper and garden. And I guess kind of my point here is that of those, I don't know, four or six thousand people that I hired in that period of time, and, uh, in the, in warehouse itself, there were fifteen hundred people working. Now, none of those people have a job here, that I'm aware of. I mean, if it is, I mean, there was a guy in that who was reading the mind order here one day, you know. The point is, there's, there's a huge change in our, in our economic picture. We go back a little ways and we look fondly at those, those good old days. Huge amount of people just don't work here, don't live here anymore. And I think that's why when we, I think we need to be very cautious when we look at new projects, to make sure that we don't, that we temper our concerns with the reality of, of what's really there in Coos Bay's history and future. Uh, you know, I'm not necessarily an expert on this stuff, I mean, a lot of it ran with my head, and I'm not in those business anymore, but I do know that a bunch of those people don't work here anymore and never, never work in those industries again. So, uh, people who work in that industry now, or I don't know, I don't remember, but it's a fraction, I know. So I guess my comment is just, we're supposed to be careful and, uh, throw the proverbial baby out with the bathwater, uh, when we consider future opportunities for Coos Bay, knowing that no matter what we do, uh, something's not going to be quite right. And in the turk about hiring people, how many people are, you know, supposed to be hired? I can tell you from starting a large, the product plant up in Garter, when I first started, it's all about now, it's a greenfield. You know, we probably hired substantially more people than we thought we were in our wisdom as we made the plans for that. For what it's worth, just some comments about Coos Bay, for an old Coos Bay guy. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mabel, the, uh, this, what we're doing here, exhibit one, the economic opportunity analysis. If we approve it, and say, great, we recommend the city council approve this, what impact this document have in the future?
This document is simply a planning document for the city to help us forecast our needs for economic growth and our needs for, uh, land to provide for industrial, commercial development.
And if we adopt this document as it is, it's not going to set anything in stone and say that we have to deny this application based on the economic opportunity analysis?
Correct. It, it does not in any way suggest that we have to do anything with respect to the port project. It suggests that we are working side by side with the port and supportive of expanded opportunities in Coos Bay, and that is, you know, there's always a balance. There's the economic side. We do our environmental estuary planning through the estuary management plan. That's a whole nother piece that will have to be dealt with. But this doesn't set anything in stone. This is purely a planning document. It's based on information received at a point in time. We understand this project isn't ready to go today, and it might change in the future. It's purely a planning document based on the best available knowledge at the time it was created. And it's a requirement to do this, and if some substantial, something substantially changes in the future, we could come back and amend it. But it doesn't hold us to anything. The policies are policies there, in line with what council has said they're supportive of, and that's just a guiding, a guiding document.
So if we approve this document as it is, and in five years, the port says, we want to build a huge tire fighter in the middle of downtown Coos Bay, can we say no?
Right, if it is not allowed in the zone in which it would be developed, if it's not allowed, maybe if it's impacted by the estuary management plan, it's not allowed, then yes, we could say no. This doesn't mean we have to say yes.
Right. And so if there is something in the proposed PCIP that strikes the city as not kosher, then we don't have to re-go on the portal?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a state, I mean, that's what it...
Basically, the state, the state law says we have to do this every so often.
Correct.
And we gave, how much money?
We received a $50,000 grant from the Ford Family Foundation to complete this work.
Okay. So, thank you Ford family, and they've done this, whoever consultants for, uh, somewhere, they put up...
Yep, Echo Northwest.
Echo Northwest, they did this.
They need to be from somewhere else to know for us to believe it.
You wouldn't believe they would. All right. And now going on to Exhibit Two. I think, yeah, let me get to it here. Whoops. Comprehensive plan proposed text amendments. Can you just explain the impact of the proposed text amendments in Exhibit Two?
Yes, so, these are our econ, the vision for the city, economic vision, right? And then it sets forth the goals that we are striving for, and I'm just going to read them out loud. Strengthen and diversify the local economy. So that's diversify, strengthen, right? It's not just singularly focused. Make Coos Bay a destination to invest and work in. Align land use and infrastructure with economic priorities. Foster strategic partnerships and regional collaboration. And so as you go through that, there's the policies that are how the council would operate and when they're making decisions. And so this would be their guiding, guiding document when, you know, trying to make a decision about strengthening, diversifying the local economy, et cetera.
So the, the concerns that Ms. Moffett identified in particular, and about the language not being a hundred percent accurate in this, does that have any, if it was included and it isn't accurate, what would the effect be?
Nothing. As I said, it's a point in time gathering of data, and so at the point in time when this data gathering was taken place, those were the, that was the information, and not of all of what is being stated is accurate. Like I said, we're not attributing 9,000 jobs to Coos Bay, we're attributing maybe 600.
God, I hope not.
Right? We know that's not a reality for the city itself. Um, we know, you know, whether or not the project costs 2.3 billion or 4.3 billion has no bearing on our economic opportunities analysis, so...
What kind of timeline constraints, I mean, when do we have to have, or when does the city, I mean, we're, we're just, we're like an appendix, you know, kind of useless really. So when, but when does the city council have to have this done by?
So the city council is tentatively scheduled to hear it, I believe, on November second, fourth? And so that would be the, on the fourth?
Okay.
The goal to have a recommendation before that time?
And is there any constraint put on by the statute as far as when we have to have this done?
Um, no, it's, well, it's, we need to amend our EOA to get the twenty-year supply updated information, so, and we're coming up on that timeframe. We, through this process, it's a legislative process, we could drag it out indefinitely, you know, and, but is that what's best for the city of Coos Bay?
Anybody else? Anything else, Chelsea?
Um, I don't think so. It's just a, just to reiterate that this is a requirement for the city. It is an economic opportunities analysis. Projects, large projects such as the PCIP should be considered. We, we would be doing ourselves a disservice not to consider it. Again, it is not, the weight is not on that project. This EOA is considering many other things. Lots of data gathering, conversations, community input was had over the last year. If the information on the dollar amount of the project changes, that doesn't affect the EOA. The policies in the comprehensive plan don't constrain, constrict the city to doing one, taking one simple action, right? Things can change. We need updates to the estuary management plan, separate process, updates to zoning code, separate process. None of that is a part of tonight's proposal. So this, um, while there's been lots of focus on the PCIP project, this is the city's comprehensive economic opportunities analysis that we're, we're looking at and asking for a recommendation on.
Okay. Anything else from the commissioners? Okay. So I think we can close the public hearing now, unless somebody else has a, any other comment, they just wanted to get off their chest? All right. Excuse me while I turn the page on my script. Oh, I now close the public hearing, the record at 6:52 PM. All right, now, commissioners, all four of us who attended tonight's meeting, it is our time to deliberate. And I think Chelsea has pretty succinctly told us what we can do. We can say yea, nay, continue, or we can say yea with these recommendations. But as we've discovered in however many years that these four of us have been on here, what we say doesn't really carry much weight, so we can do whatever we want. Jeff?
Mr. Chair, would you like to make a motion?
This, this particular case, to make a motion, the city council approve land use application based on the information presented by the applicant and recommended findings of approval.
All right, I'll second it.
Second?
Bill seconds, okay. Bill, I'll second. Any discussion, deliberation?
Well, I think that what we just handled is this is indeed still a study. It's not, you know, we have stamped out and said, yeah, go ahead, Bill, guys. That's not, this is, this is a, if we did continue to study it, then we, well, we'd be cutting ourselves off in October, in October, if we don't make a couple of studies in a week.
Right, and as far as I can tell, based on my own experience and what Mr. Mabel just said, this is a document that's a bunch of recommendations and a bunch of lofty goals. It's not, it's nothing that if they cross over the line, no one's going to court, you know? It's, no, I guess it wouldn't be court, but maybe to lose... know. It's no, I guess it wouldn't be court, but maybe to Luba or something like that. So while I appreciate the concerns, and especially the, what Ms. Moffett identified, because inaccurate information annoys me when things are inaccurate, I don't see any reason to, to make any changes at this point in time. Because like Ms. Schnebel said, this is just a snapshot in time. Things change. And frankly, what this sounds like to me, it's something that Salem invented, or the people in Salem said that we had to do this. I don't know when the law was passed, probably in the 70s or something like that. And so now we have to do these studies every so year. So a bunch of people get together and make money doing, you know, 50,000 bucks, I guess, to put this together, and then we approve it, and then we go yea, we'll put this on our wall. It's going to be like that picture over there, you know. It's going to have not that much authority. So, and.
But it is indeed, it's going to be a piece of, of, part of the evidence that would be used.
Yes.
In the future, whether something is either approved or not, this document is part of that, part of that decision-making process.
I mean, and most of what I see here is pretty, I mean, how do you argue with maintain and implement an economic development plan that identifies clear actions and partnerships to recruit and locate a diverse range of businesses and industries in Kus Bay? I mean, that's, most of these statements in here are fairly, I wouldn't say neutral, but I mean, they're not, they're not saying one thing or another, really. Support and exist, support new and existing industrial businesses considering opportunity. I mean, there's nothing in here that says, you know, make sure that there's no more bike paths and we all have more logging. I mean, there's just nothing like that. I, so I, I mean, I, I don't see a reason to go against it, really. Anybody else? All right, let's vote. All in favor of Mr. Marano's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we recommend approval. All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Schnebel, I didn't follow the script exactly right. Do I need to do anything else?
Um, I think.
The city council is scheduled to consider the planning commission recommendation during a second public hearing at the regular meeting on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. There we go. Okeydoke. So now, the second, so now, this is the second one. This is about the mini storages, self-storage units, excuse me. I now open a public hearing on land use application number 187-25-00015. P is in Papa, L is in Lima, N is in November, G is in golf. Proposal to approve and adopt by ordinance text amendments to the Kus Bay Development Code. Today is October 14th, 2025 at 6:57 PM. My name is Pat Terry. I am the Planning Commissioners' Vice Chair. The Planning Commission will make recommendations to the city council. That's why we're doing recommendations only to the city council on this application based on the complete record, including the testimony received at tonight's hearing. These proceedings will be recorded. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with the Kus Bay Development Code, the state law. Specifically, city staff will present the comment, or the staff report the recommendations. Public testimony, people will come up and talk. I'm supposed to be for and against and then neutral, but I wouldn't follow that. I doubt I'm going to follow it this time. So you understand how that works. City staff may then present additional material and recommendations based on the public testimony. After each presentation, I can ask for comments from the four of us up here. We ask that each speaker limit themselves to no more than three minutes. Please remember that all presentations will be timed. You'll be informed when your times expire. The speakers exceeding the timetable will be asked to immediately conclude his earlier remarks. But as the vice chair and the guy leading this, I'll let you ramble on for a little bit because there's not many people speaking. To minimize repetitive testimony, organizations are encouraged only that one person speak. Each person may testify only once unless called back to the podium with request of the planning commission member or to respond to a question. Thanks for your cooperation. Conflicts of interest, ex parte contact, or bias. The planning commission is required to disclose any conflict of interest, ex parte contacts that we will have with the proposal or applicant. That is, whether we have any financial or other personal interest in the proposal and whether we have spoken with anybody about the propose, about the proposal outside of this hearing. Does anybody have any disclosures to make? I do. I'm a director of, I'm on the board of directors of the corporation that owns mini storages, units, none in the city of Kus Bay yet, maybe never, depending on how this goes. I'm also on the board of directors of another organization that, well, Shore Pirates Bay Village. It's a manufactured home facility located on Ocean Boulevard. And we have about 40 acres out back that is developable and, you know, considering different ideas and that self-storage has obviously occurred to us, especially for our people that live there. I will say that that is a nonprofit organization. All of our profits are donated mostly to local organizations once a year. So that's my conflict of interest. But nobody else? Okay. Anybody want to challenge me and kick me off of this decision-making thing right now? None of you guys?
No.
Vice Chair, can you make a impartial decision?
Yeah, I think I can.
Thank you.
I guess I was supposed to read that to myself, wasn't I? Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Schnebel for guiding me through that. Okay. State law requires me to tell you a number of things at the beginning of the hearing. First, the applicable substantive criteria that apply to this application are contained in the notice of public hearing, the written staff report, and will be identified and discussed in the oral staff report. Second, your testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to this application. Third, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker or other people an opportunity to respond may preclude appeal of a decision on the application based on that issue. The planning commission will make a final recommend, or make a recommendation to the city council for a final decision. A decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, also known as Luba. Okay, so now we get the staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Terry. So again, planning commission's making a recommendation to council. The proposed text amendments in summary really come down to adding a new definition for mini storage and expressly prohibiting mini storage facilities in, across all our zone districts where they're not already expressly prohibited. Counsel, some background, counsel identified self-storage unit facilities as a type of development that must be restricted to protect our city's limited supply of commercial and industrial lands. We just talked about the updated economic opportunities analysis that finds we have a deficit of those land areas. And the city council has identified they would like to prioritize development types that bring jobs, housing, active street escapes, and increased assessed property values. And so this is why they've moved forward with this proposal. Of note, all existing facilities would be allowed to remain and be maintained. The proposed amendments are in line with the city's comprehensive plan. They're in line with statewide planning goals. You've got the full agenda staff report in front of you. I've heard from multiple property owners in this case. Lots of people called, came in, asked questions. None were in opposition to date. I called out those in support and those neutral in the staff report. In addition to this, I received one more who was in support of the proposal. Again, ask questions, but commission, the planning commission can recommend, make a recommendation, approval, denial, changing it up however you would like. And council is tentatively scheduled to hear this on November 4th.
It amazes me that we have this, where we came up with this horrible hatred of storing units. I mean, they're not, they're quiet. Nobody's bothered by it. That requires minimal police protection. And some places that we have, some of this property that we have, doesn't have much of, might be hard to find a use other than that. I don't know. I, I'm just, it seems to me like there is not the worst sort of, of a development that come to a, to a piece of property in our fine city.
Comment. What, what precipitate the city not coming to the planning commission first and asking this question? Was there, some, did somebody come to the city to develop a project that would all of a sudden change the flavor of Kus Bay? Or is it just, what, what, what's the?
Motivation?
What's the reason?
Yeah, like I said, it's, they just identified that type of development as having, as not being one that meets their economic development goals. And.
So, so the council actually sat there and said, we don't like self-storage projects? That, that was their thoughts? Just?
Right. I can't tell you the exact impetus, but in a council meeting, they identified and discussed it and directed staff to move that forward. And so this is plan, their involvement of planning commission through the process.
Okay, so this is for a limited period of time, correct?
No, incorrect.
Forever.
It would change the code until the code was changed again.
So some of the comments that self-storage facilities do not provide jobs, excuse me? Well, first of all, there's contractors, one. Two, there's management companies. There's people that actually go out and repair these facilities.
Do you want me to explain that in more detail, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, at least, yeah, there's people, there's contractors, there's maintenance companies, there's, when a storage unit is auctioned off, there's people that come in and buy these things and some of them in the secondhand stores, you know, they go through there and clean them out. There's people that clean, workers that clean things out, that clean out the storage units. There's money paid to the, well, like I said, the contractors, and as well as it supports a lot of family-owned businesses, I mean, that I am aware of in this area.
And they pay taxes.
And yeah, it's considerable amount of taxes.
So, so let's, let's just hit.
Jeff, Jeff, hold on a second. We're getting off of our script. We're supposed to ask for public comment first.
Okay.
Let's, let's do that.
Correct.
All right.
We're sorry.
Let the record show I hit Jim on the arm of the pen. So Mr. Vern Hurs is the first person for public comment. Do you want to say something, Mr. Hurs?
Originally, the computer said it was eight minutes and 27 seconds. I wasn't aware of, I would be limited to three. Can you?
I, well, I'm going to use my discretion in here. It depends on what you say, I guess.
Okay, great. I'm Vern Hurs. I own Empire Mini Storage. The, the city council, when they created the moratorium, they said that they had, they had enough mini storage facilities. I don't think they had any. The mayor was asked, I called him and asked for a copy of the report from a study that they most certainly must have performed to come to that conclusion that there are enough. He contacted Chelsea Schnebel, non-elected and appointed person, and she indicated that she did not repair a report. Instead, she verbally reported to the city council. Her information was from researching the ratios of other cities. Ratios of other cities have nothing to do with reality in Kus Bay. Kus Bay storage facilities are usually completely full and get, or keep getting multiple phone calls daily asking for availability. So her reason for the moratorium is not accurate. A quote from the moratorium resolution, whereas with limited and readily buildable land, consideration should be on the highest and best use of each parcel, focused on greatest community need and ability to produce property tax revenue for the assessed value of the developed parcel. So they want more money and the community actually needs more storage facilities. And the city council basically wants to hinder that. If you need a place to put your belongings because you got beat up by your significant other, good luck. And that happens a lot. If you are moving here and need a place to put your things while waiting to get your, into your new home, good luck. Many people in Kus Bay needing local storage end up having to store their belongings in Roseburg because they can't get it here. And those who want to engage in free enterprise have the right to invest in what they believe will provide them with a reasonable, reasonable return. And if they fail, so be it. America is fundamentally based on a free enterprise system, which is a market-based economic model characterized by private ownership, voluntary exchange, competition, and limited government intervention. Entrepreneurs are incentivized to innovate and take risks, which we do, with a potential for profit serving as a major driver of economic activity. The government plays a limited but essential role by enforcing contracts and protecting property rights. If this prohibition goes into effect and a needed industry is prohibited, who's next? I suspect that the warehouse, not a mini storage facility, that U-Haul put in, is being counted as 650 storage units. But we need more, people need more facilities. I have no interest in building more. I'm 74. I'm done. But I run this. I designed it, built it, and I run it. And, and when you say that we can stay, we are permitted to stay. Gee, thanks. Any questions?
I have a question.
Which? Hold on, hold on. This is for Mr. Hurs right now. We'll get to that there. Anybody questions for Mr. Hurs? Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Hurs. Appreciate it. Well, let's wait until this comes out.
Oh, that's.
Do you want to write it down so you don't forget?
I won't forget. I might have locked it.
Uh, Mr. Ross?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Tom Ross. My address is 763 South Broadway. I am employed by U-Haul Company, and I am asking that you either deny this application or continue it for a couple of reasons. One, I believe the change in the definition of the text is too broad. It, it is listed as moving and storage parentheses, self-storage. I've been in this industry in Kuz, Curry, Douglas County, and it's my responsibility for U-Haul to know just about every storage operator, their current occupancies, what's available and what's not. I do that for several reasons. One reason is, is I need to be able to forecast what we need for the truck sharing program for people coming into the area. I can tell you that there is not enough storage, that everyone in the area is either at maximum capacity or very near to it. Okay? So based on that, I'm asking for continuance either to get more information on the industry. I see nothing in the staff report that indicates any analysis was done considering occupancy and the need. Keeping in mind that storage is an essential service, during the Great Recession of 2009, it actually helped the city of Kus Bay in many ways. One, the availability of stuff, storage units allowed for people who were losing their homes, not their jobs, to put their items in storage, consolidate households with other family members, and then return to business as normal when that bubble burst and remain in Kus Bay. I'm going to look also at the pandemic. It's an essential service. We had the same scenario basically occur. People were trying to evade or run away from the pandemic, put their items in storage, go into refuge, and when that stopped, they returned back to Kus Bay to resume living. Okay, so my, my, my goal here is, is to keep in mind that as an essential service, we take care of the Coast Guard with the storage facilities. We have tons of Coast Guard personnel that use that product. Okay? Let me just jump into a quick note here that I wrote. I don't think that the storage community at large here was adequately informed on the potential of this moratorium. I just don't believe that. I just don't believe that. I know Vern wasn't, I know that Monarch, the Societies were not actively involved in it as well. I believe we, looking at your EOA, we found possible flaws in the actual amount of acreage based on the jobs that are needed. I'm not reliant on that information as being accurate to make a supposition on whether this moratorium needs to be in place or not. And with that, I'll yield my time and thank you for the consideration.
Commissioners, any comments or questions for Mr. Hurs?
Ross.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ross, that was Mr. Hurs before, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Ross, appreciate it.
Okay.
Okeydoke. So, written comments, I don't think we had any on this, did we, Mr. Schnebel?
No.
Okay. Rebuttal from the staff?
I'll just say, Mr. Ross suggested the storage community wasn't adequately informed. Every permitted licensed storage facility was mailed notice, so I would respectfully disagree with that. Mentioned, the mayor said that my analysis was based on ratios of other cities. Well, I'll reiterate, this is a council-initiated text amendment, not a planning department-initiated text amendment. My research was based on averages, information, but not ratios, us compared to others. And then I'll just make note that the city of Kus Bay, there's a need for storage, yes, but the city of Kus Bay can't provide that for the entire northbound Kus County community, so just keeping that in mind.
Okay, my question is, it said in the original discussion that they've wanted to prohibit it in zones that it was currently allowed. Where, what zones is it allowed in, what zones is it currently prohibited in?
Where it's not expressly prohibited, to make it clear.
Well, which ones?
So, our code, currently, the ones where commercial uses are already expressly prohibited are in our small lot residential, low-density residential, low-density residential overlay, and the watershed district.
Okay, so the residential district, and whatever the watershed is?
Yeah, our medium-density residential district is not expressly prohibited.
And that would be an area like?
That'd be an area of higher density housing, not commercial, but not single-family homes.
Right, people would probably be using this stuff if it was there. I think maybe, I don't know, you know, I never used one, I, I had watched the show on TV though, it's pretty interesting, but they might find it there when they dig around. I guess my thought on it is, it seems pretty drastic to say that you're going to just prohibit it until the end of time in, in just everywhere. And like, we're, like, we're really stamping out some kind of terrible blight on the community, which is, which it isn't. I mean, as people pointed out in my current role as a realtor, people come, have, buy a house, come here, not really, can't move in for a couple of weeks or whatever, they need a place to put their stuff, there's no question about that. And the pieces of places that I'm aware of, many of them are quite, quite attractive for what they are. I mean, I think it kind of reminds me of, we have an office building downtown Kus Bay, and I remember the very beginning, people were upset that we might have an office or some kind of, something there, other than a cute shop. And that it turns out that it's hard, cute shops are hard to survive. And so that's why we don't have more of a lighting of streets in Kus Bay affirmative enjoy. And I think, to me, this rolls into the, the cute shop thing, where it's, it's, it's not a cute shop, but it's something that is, has a need, or people wouldn't build them. And B is, you know, I mean, is, is, must be justified in the mind of the person that's doing it, and there must, there must be a need, or they wouldn't build them. And the ones over there would be starving dead. So, anyway, that's my thoughts on it.
Mr. Marin, I interrupted you when you were gone.
Yes, you did, but properly so. So, this comment about large increases in assessed values, actually, self-storage projects create some of the highest values per square foot out there for, for that type of, it's, it's just way up the top, which increases values and taxes for the city. It's a very big deal. I concur with the occupancy throughout Kus Bay. We recently did a self-storage project, and the lady said we are 100% full. We talked to people in Myrtle Point, Van, Kus Bay, everybody's full. So there's demand here. I do think that there's particular areas of the city, like the Empire Historic District and the Waterfront District, that wouldn't be well-suited for self-storage. Downtown Kus Bay, probably not. What about the Pennies Building? Can you imagine maybe a storefront, an interior self-storage, which would bring people into downtown? That building's going to sit there, and sit there, and sit there. That's just one thought. The other space, outside of these three particular areas, well-suited for self-storage. And U-Haul's stacking, so they've taken a piece of property, highest that it's used, and really elevated its, its value, plus it's stacked storage. It's just a great, it's, I thought, these guys know what they're doing with self-storage. They're used to building in cities where the price of lint is super high. It's a great use of that piece of property. So, I, I, against this, I, I think we should table this and sort out where would be appropriate to put them and maybe exclude them from other particular neighborhoods.
A little bit more precise, instead of just...
Absolutely.
Scalp this as a sledgehammer.
Do we know, do we know how many exist in the city of Kus Bay right now?
We have 13 facilities permitted and licensed.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Well, I, you know, I agree with, with Jeff, I mean, I think that I certainly wouldn't be voting for this today. You know, I think Caitlin had really getting better feel on where, where the factings might be, you know, rather than say we're going to, there's not going to be any more of Memorial or Kus Bay. What happens if they tore one down, would they not be able to build another one there? I mean, there's a lot of questions that aren't addressed here. So, yeah, I think it's, it's easy to be thought out a little better.
Okay. Let's see. Actually, I kind of messed up on the order here, are there any more public comments on this particular issue? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing at this point, and we've already kind of deliberated, kind of melded this all into one, but I am just the vice chair, so I...
Can be expected.
Yeah, exactly. So, we'll close the public record, the public hearing record at 7:24 PM. We've already somewhat deliberated up here on the planning commission. I'm just going to say that I'm from this area, did go away for a while, but I'm from this area, as is my father, as is my grandfather, as is my great-grandfather. And, you know, seeing just what I've seen since I was cognizant of things and the industry in this area changing from obviously the lumber-dominated thing, which my family worked in, gosh, if you hired people at warehouses, you probably hired some of them.
Sure.
Anyway, and to what it is now, but in my, in my normal job, I deal with people dying. I'm not a doctor, I'm a lawyer, and we do probates. And oftentimes, people out of town, you know, the kids are out of town, mom and dad will come here and pass away, got to sell the house, got to get the stuff out of the house, got to find a storage unit, where there's no storage units available. You know, go to Reed's for it, I don't want, there's no availability up there either. So, I do, I, just from my little perspective, I see there being a need, and the vacancy rates that Mr. Ross, Mr. Hurs indicated, I find consistent and find compatible with my anecdotal evidence that I have. And, you know, Kus Bay is in my, is one of our industries, old people, no offense to the old people, but, I mean, we get a lot of people from California coming up here to retire, or just coming up here. And I think that the storage units, when mom has to move into assisted living, you got to clear out her house, you need someplace to put it. You don't want to just get rid of everything, have a garage sale, you need time. And I, I agree with Jeff and, I'm sorry, Mr. Marin and Mr. Berg, I believe that we should maybe continue this and say, tell the city council we're not ready to make a decision at this point in time on this unless we have some more information. And I will fully admit, between the time that we got this application and now, I have not had the time to really go through it, it was right in the middle of hunting season, so, you know, there's other things going on in my free time. So, want to make a motion, Mr. Marin?
Can I, real quickly, when you make a motion to continue, I would suggest setting it to a state certain and also providing staff with guidance on what zones you'd like to see them still allowed, not allowed?
Do you know, do you know when our next meeting would possibly be?
We're having a meeting on November 12th and a meeting on, I believe, then December 9th.
November 11th? No, November 12th, because 11th is...
Correct.
Can we push it? Past?
You can set it to January if you want.
Yep, let's, let's push it out. I think we need to, it may, may not be well-suited to just state a particular zone, if we're, it's, it's easy to say Empire Water, Waterfront District and this Waterfront Heritage District, those are very specific areas. But beyond that, it might be tough to just say, well, let's include all icy zone properties. So if we can spend some time trying to define an area, this might create some problems for staff to do this, but try and get some consensus on the areas that we should include them and not include them. So some physical boundaries, draw some maps. That's my recommendation.
And can I confirm the commission would like to continue this for future recommendation to the January 13th, 2026 Planning Commission?
I think that's what Mr. Marin's motion is, right? We're continuing this in the January 13th, 2026 meeting and requesting that the, the Planning Commission does...
So to, for her to deal with that thought, she might have to come back to us again, can we continue it from that point forward for another 30 days?
Yes.
Okay, good.
All right, so I guess the motion has been made by Mr. Marin to continue this to the January, whatever, 13th...
13th.
13th, 2026 meeting.
Second?
All in favor? All right, all right. So, I'll go to my other agenda now. That's going to be it, all that's on here. Okay, so we've done that, public hearings, any comments from the planning commission about anything else? We're all talked out, okay. Staff comments?
Just a note that we'll have a special meeting, not on the regular Tuesday, it's on a Wednesday in November, November 12th, where we'll conduct another public hearing on proposed text amendments.
All right, very good, there's nothing else, the meeting's adjourned.